The audience is recording videotape and in need to acknowledge Renee Grass, a Pecasa resident. All out of agreement, the meeting agenda of the subject deliberated vote by the Board of Selectmen. The purpose of this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, we're calling it to act upon the request by the acting town administrator to create a new position as allowed by the town charter, Article four dash six B, to make an appointment of a permanent police chief to facilitate that process and to give the town administrator the ability to conduct a full and comprehensive search, as has been the practice of the town, and also to facilitate the ability of the legislature to take action on the town's request for action with respect to removing the position from civil service. The interim position is being created in order to provide a framework so that the town administrator will be able to do that. And we have reviewed the various items that the parties have agreed to be appropriate, to be included in the contract, and I'm going to take what has been agreed to and I'm going to put it into format this weekend, and we will have it before the board after everybody cross checks to make sure it complots with their individual requirements at the board's next meeting. Does anybody else have anything to say on this agenda item? Saying none, is there a motion? Okay, Mr. Ellis, please come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those of you who don't know me, I was a past selectman and a past member of the planning board and maybe five or six other committees that exist in the town. I was the first elected in 1973, so I am showing my gray hair what it is. And I would like to say very strongly that as a past elected member of town government and having been elected by the people in that position, I feel that by appointing a director of police services is going in the wrong direction from what the people who originally when this charter was designed a number of years ago to go out was to create a tough police chief. We've been very fortunate in the town of Born since Chief Ford to have probably the best elite police chiefs on Cape Cod. It's from that point to now with the present member who's been set in as a replacement to take over. These are professionals. You have the best police department on Cape Cod. Witness the fact that all you gotta do is pick up the paper and read about every other police department on Cape Cod and the problems that they have. You don't have that in Born. There may be inside problems that developed, and I'm sure that one of the selectmen can probably address that, but they get hammered out and taken care of in-house. We don't need to have a czar to run the police department that none of the people in the town would probably know. Right now, if you call a police department in Born, you have someone who comes, they're very good, very polite, handle the situation, and they know the town. This leaves it open that you can have some guerrilla from Boston get appointed because he happens to have enough votes to get, who doesn't, has nothing to do with the police department or the way it runs in Born. It might be run by another department out of the city that we're not interested in. We're interested in community policing. We have it in Born, and I'm not aware of a hell of a lot of complaints that go on. If they are, they're addressed in town. When you create czars, as it were, in this instant case, you have so many different layers of things that have to happen. We have a police chief that we assign by the town of Born to take care of our problems, and he takes care of them in-house. If he doesn't, we have a very competent finance committee that they can go forward to and a board of selectmen to help direct them. Once you start to bring in outside help like that, it's a real serious problem because the first thing you find out, if there's a problem at that Tuxell training post, he wouldn't even know where the hell it was. So we've got a wicked good, I hate to use that term, excuse me, we have an excellent police department, and I think it needs to be supported. And when I was, my term as a selectman, we supported the, we supported the police department to a very receptive, anything that the Board of Selectmen wanted or dictated, got done. The finance committee had a number of things that they dealt with, it got done. I am on the police building committee right now. It's probably in my, since my term when I first got elected, one of the best committees I've ever been on because it goes into every nook, cranny, nickel, and dime. You have a hell of a good department, you've got a hell of a good police station, other than the problems that come up from construction, that is like smooth glass. So I would urge you, in strongest terms possible, not to support creating a situation as a director of police services. Stay with what you got. This department, again, at the risk of redundancy, is superior. Go down to Boswell and see what's happening. Look at the paper in Falmouth, it sandwiches a lot. The Born department is respected, it's got professionals, and that's what we want. People who belong in the town of Born, know the town of Born, are professionals, and know how to operate. I know it's a tough decision on you, the charter does require certain things, but you have a right to vote against it and support the people in the town of Born who voted in originally to have a tough chief. You've got one. So I would urge you to please not take a vote on this or to vote against it. Let the people at town meeting make the decision, and I think you'll find that the people at town meeting will support our police department. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope you'll give that some serious consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard on this agenda? Mr. Ellis, yeah?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Brian Richard from Born. Thank you, sir. So, we don't have a czar right now in this police department in the town. We went outside of the department, we voted in town meeting to take our chief of police out of civil service. We brought in a new interim chief of police who has done leaps and bounds for this department in this short tenure. Leadership, morale skyrocketed. My concern as a citizen of the town of Born, this man had a contract, took over by Pera, by imagined labor attorneys, hopefully the board, and he's here. Nine months later, there's an issue. What started the issue, that's my concern with this right now, as a citizen of the town of Born, like the paper said, a former selectman brought the attention. We have a board that we want right now, this board of selectmen. I understand you might want to take opinions from former board members. This is what we want, this is what we need. I'm just asking that we honor what we've done for this contract and hope it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the last two speakers, I think there may be some sort of miscommunication on what the board is attempting to do here. There is currently a contract for an interim director of police services under which Mr. Shastany is contracted. There were some technicalities in that contract that required the board to take the action that we're doing in order to keep him as the interim director of police services. And the goal of what we're doing is to actually keep him as the director of police services under a contract that is, has been authorized to be developed by the town administrator working with Mr. Shastany and our town council. So I believe what the board is doing is what you're, what you would like us to do.
Yeah, I believe that, man, I do. My concern is the fact that January 20th, this contract was brought in play, nine months later, there's an issue with it. To me, as a member of the town of Born, I have cause with that because as a town council, why now, why nine months later is there cause? How did that come forward from a former selectman? That's my cause.
Thank you, Brian. You can have your seat. I'm just gonna speak briefly. Mr. Ellis, I, I know you very well, and I have the utmost respect for you. I will respectfully disagree with you on a few points. From the inside, from John Ford, when I started, to Earl Baldwin, to Dennis Woodside, we had a horrible department within. It was disparaging, it was a terrible workplace, and it was run by bullies. And I say that not in a vengeful way. I say that because I think it's important for the public to understand that. And you are correct, everything was taken care of in-house brutally, by threatening and by punishment. That is, in fact, more a case of a czar than anything. And I think, again, it's important that you understand that, and you are correct, most of that information would not be known to the general public. What we have done now with creating this position has brought in a professional who has been to a number of other departments and made corrections in a similar manner. And he has made those corrections, but he still has more to do. And I think that it is very important that we keep him on board and provide him the opportunity to continue to provide us a better police department. Just one thing I will tell you is that I went to one training after I left the academy, and I can tell you there were other people on the department that served longer than I had that had never been to any training after the academy. Since then, the FBI LITA program, we have several officers that have the trifecta from there within the last nine months. It is a huge change and a massive turnaround. The important thing is, is that we elect good board members who hire good town administrators and assistant town administrators to make sure that we hire the best police chief that we can, the police chief that is best for our position. You are correct, there are a lot of chiefs that may apply for the town of Born to be hired as the new police chief. If they're not fitting the criteria that we need, I don't see that we're going to hire them. I see that we have, in the last few years that I've been on the board, hired great management, our town administrator, assistant town administrator, and many others, to include the finance director. This board, in fact, is a great board, and I have the utmost faith that, especially now that the public is being more involved and more educated, that we will continue to elect officials that are gonna do that great job of hiring the right people. And that is one of the reasons we also went to get out of civil service. Civil service restricts us to the chiefs that have applied within civil service only. And we're forced to pick from the top three that they give us. None of those three may be the right person for the job, so we become stuck with those three. If we go outside civil service, we have a greater opportunity of candidates to hire. And that's all, I'm gonna leave it at, I think I've said enough, and hopefully we've educated everyone here as well as in the public. Thank you.
Yes. Just wanna be very brief. You heard town council talk about how we met to work out the employment agreement for a director of police services. Paul's that in on those conversation as well, he's contributed to it, he will be, every step of the way, we'll be consulting with him to make sure that that employment agreement meets his needs.
If I may?
Sir?
January 19th, we interviewed, and I gladly accepted the position here as director of police services. I came here to work with Tony Skiyavi. I have worked with Tony Skiyavi as a resident in Ashland, where I was consulted about corruption within the department there in Ashland. He is tenured, a skilled town administrator, and when he asked me to come here, I was jumping for joy, I wanted to work with him. He's an excellent man. Judy, last night you said that the elephant in the room was unaddressed, and you spoke about Tony Skiyavi. I'm going to say this, the only reason I came here was for him, and I resent any besmirchment of his reputation or the judgments and the decisions that he made. Everyone here attended his party, his going away party, and heaped praise on him. And it's all of a sudden, now that he's gone, that all of this occurred. It's like a vacuum occurred, where now people that had an opportunity come forward, before this occurred, sat and waited for the leaf. What I had talked with my folks about, and this is very important, is politicizing a police department is a sin, yes, it's creating a cancer. Because when you politicize a police department, such as what would, I would call this, a soft coup, where it could have been addressed, I find that very disturbing. Now, I know all about policing, and I know about corruption. I've got friends across the country who are suing their employers for doing the right thing, chiefs. We had one in our police department, I told you who she was, Anne Kirkpatrick, who was released from Oakland, California for doing the right thing. The common problem is, when elected folks consciously choose to insert themselves into professional policing, for other reasons I don't know, it's a problem. I owe it to the town to let you know that I'm not gonna let it happen, that's why I'm here. It can't infiltrate a police department with corruption. I cleaned out Stoughton, and it happened again, and that's why I left with a whistleblower letter, because corruption was coming back. I respect police officers, I truly appreciate that they're here as a show of support. All I wanna do, all I wanna do is to allow the department to coalesce, grow, become the best that they can be, so I can step back. I don't need the job, I want the job, but I am gonna fiercely fight to make sure that we hold the line. We've come too far, and I owe it to Tony, and I owe it to, thank you folks for listening to me. And I think we can all agree that the, he's not here to defend himself, that's why I am. And I agree to many respects with Mr. Ellis. Yes, you don't want somebody coming in as a gold digger, turning over the soil, running out after three years, and then leaving it room high and dry. We've spent significant time to make this department what it is, a world-class department. I'm not done with them. I wanna help them. My job is to create chiefs, from a patrolman all the way up. If I can't do that, and if they don't have that mindset, I failed. So I, I just wanna say thank you, I appreciate your time, and just one, my last word is to be, Tony Skiyavi is excellent.
Lieutenant, sit.
Brian, this is Sagon Beach. This is sort of a comfortable position for me to be in. I wanna first start off by saying, with what I've seen in the past year, why I once thought I would wanna be a leader in this department, and I'm happy, I'm going to continue as a lieutenant, I have no desire to move beyond that. What I have seen of the discourse that has been shown for a position that you had two very qualified candidates from within, I understand the board's desire to seek the best candidate, neither of those two candidates you had from within the department were ever met by previous town administrators to have any conversation about what their thoughts were, about how they stood, and a lot of that decision seemed to have been placed upon what the previous town administrator thought of the previous chief. I'm not gonna get onto character, stop, spots on that. I do wanna say that you've been a great mentor. Nothing I'm seeing today is, is about you or what you've brought to the department. It's strictly about the process that led us here and what the timeline is for future. How long does this keep going on? I want to see somebody from within who is very qualified with the training that we are providing, because there was a window when, after the last chief left, where we, about a month or so, where we started implementing some things that, such as a task was determined, what, sorry, informed for people to say what kind of trainings they were interested in, reaching out to people to get them more included in policy development. There was a whole host of issues that we addressed that were issues that were bothering officers day to day that were addressed immediately. And that was prior to Chief Shastany coming in. You've continued that work, and I appreciate that, and please do not take this as any affront at yourself. I just would like to know that there's a plan, a timeline in place, so that it's not continuing to have a director of police this, a director of police that, running the department. There are qualified candidates, of which I am not going to be taking part of, as of my word, when it comes up for that position, I will not be putting my name in. I am, I'm interested in helping this department, continuing to lead the department, I've dedicated much of my career, and I'm not trying to float my own boat here, but there was nights that I would, I've been, I was sleeping in that police building as it was getting built to make sure that we got the best bang for our buck in building that place. I love this town, I love the department, I love those guys and girls. I'd do anything for them. I don't like what I'm seeing here. We have a process, we have a ability to do that. Let's follow that and move forward with it. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard, Mr. Ellis?
At the risk of redundancy, I would just like to make it known that I, my comments were genuine, that felt from my heart. I understand exactly what Mr. McCall said, and I appreciate that very much. But as far as General Skiyavi is concerned, it seems like I spent my life in the Air Force. And the first thing I would never do is argue with the brigadier general, because I was on NCO, and you learn your place. I have utmost respect for him, whatever he did or didn't do. I wasn't in a position any longer to judge that, but I just wanna let it be known that my position is as I stated. Thank you very much.
I was gonna say, I think one thing that's very important to know here is, we're really talking about an interim moment here, right? We are in transition right now at town meeting, the town meeting vote is, right, elected to take the chief of police out of civil service. That has put us into, if you will, almost a purgatory moment right now, right? Where if we were to hire a chief to civil service, we would probably be removing that chief sometime around the first of the year when the legislation passes. So it is a stopgap moment, is to continue the director of police services until we can get that legislation passed from the State House, where the chief comes out of civil service, and then we can go through the selection process of appointing the next chief. I can tell you, Paul has told me he is gonna step down. I assume the contract, when I see it, the language in there, he will serve until the new chief is appointed, and then he will, he will step aside. And then we will no longer have a director of police services. There will be a chief of police that runs the police department, and like I say, we're kinda in this no man's land right now, where we're waiting for that legislation to pass, and, and we also have the charter to say on this, there has to be a chief of police that falls onto that position. So this is, I think, a fix by the board to get us through that, if you will, maybe the, the next six months or so, until we can correct this and move on from there. I do want you to know, this is a temporary situation, that's my view of it.
Mr. Chair, if I might bring to the attention of the board one, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted, I neglected to include this, the agreement that I am working on has an end date in the, in the contract, which would be either when the new police chief were appointed or June 30th of next year, of 2021. So that, in that, in that character, twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two. And so I just wanted to share that with you, the board. How do you see it?
So, I can assure you that the five people sitting here, the two people sitting there, the one person sitting there, we want what is best for the town. That requires us taking into consideration every single angle of a situation. We are privy to a lot of that, and so when we have our deliberations and we talk about them, it, it is really important that we listen, and we do listen, and we do provoke. I think every single person here provokes questions and tries to understand things. I agree with the gentleman about, you know, what's changed, what, you know, we have, we have to answer that question. We don't have that answer. I do believe that it is important that we stop and reflect and say, okay, what, what has been something that's different? In reference to Brendan, you know, I know that in that, that type of transition for an interim position, which this is, there was no comment at any point that there was no one on, on the police department who would be, you know, disqualified or qualified. It was, we wanted to bring in a professional, this is what Mr. Skiyavi said, he wanted to bring in a professional with a lot of experience. As we know, community policing is a hot topic. Luckily, Born, as Mr. Ellis noted, is a very benign town in a lot of ways, and so we're very fortunate that we can really take advantage of the interpersonal skills and the ways to bring out the best in our town. And I can tell you, you know, that's why I'm here. I don't have a lot of time, this is my time, you know, and I, you know, and so I'm, I'm very committed to what is best for the town. And I think a little bit of education from, you know, or experience from outside of our town is really important. We can't be insular. We need to be able to be aware of what national issues are, what issues we don't realize are issues, we need to. I do believe that it is important that we stop and reflect and say, okay, what, what has been something that's different? In reference to Brendan, you know, I know that in that, that type of transition for an interim position, which this is, there was no comment at any point that there was no one on, on the police department who would be, you know, disqualified or qualified. It was, we wanted to bring in a professional. This is what Mr. Skiabi said. He wanted to bring in a professional with a lot of experience. As we know, community policing is a hot topic. Luckily, Born, as Mr. Ellis noted, is a very benign town in a lot of ways. And so we're very fortunate that we can really take advantage of the interpersonal skills and the ways to bring out the best in our town. And I can tell you, you know, that's why I'm here. I, I don't have a lot of time. This is my time, you know, and I, you know, and so I'm, I'm very committed to what is best for the town. And I think a little bit of education from, you know, or experience from outside of our town is really important. We can't be insular. We need to be able to be aware of what national issues are, what issues we don't realize are issues. We need to have training. And one of the things that has moved us here right now is that, and our goal last night, and we'll talk about it again today, is that we've seen positive things come out of this situation. And we are seeing enough of a change in our town, you know, with a, with a former longtime town administrator. We had to spend a lot of time figuring out, okay, what, what direction do we go? We have to reflect on, what are the reasons why things didn't happen? And so, in a way, maybe you're somewhat of an interim town administrator, you know, sometimes that bridge position is like that, is shorter term. We have an opportunity and the luxury of being able to really analyze it, dig deeper, find out what are the issues, and stop playing games. I don't have time for games. If I'm going to play games, it's not politics. So I would like to say that this is an interim Director of Police Services. It's not the permanent direction that we are expecting to be going. So, and the end of the contract is being discussed. So it's not forever and ever and ever. This isn't, we're not, nobody's pulling one over on anybody. So I appreciate the time, and you're listening to what I had to say. Hopefully, it was cohesive enough. But let's, let's try to make it work. I think one of the things that I truly appreciated about our discussion last night is that we stopped and we saw a problem. We identified, this is where we are right now. What do we do to be best we can for the town born? And this is what we think is the best for right now.
Ready, anybody else wants to speak on this? Sir.
Hi, my name is Mike Easop. I'm from Sagamore Beach. I've been a resident in this town for forty-five years. I've raised my family here. I've seen the town grow. I've seen the board go from three members through the charter process to the five board that it has now. While I didn't ever really care for going to a charter, I understand maybe the time came. And although I didn't support it, I accept it and I respect it. With that said, what Mr. Lucier said a little while ago is that there appears to be something happened nine months ago when the original contract was made. Who made that mistake, or what happened there? I'm not going to point fingers, I'm too distant from, from all of this. But I agree, something happened, because it wouldn't have been brought up all of a sudden. It'd be good to know where the mistake was, and, you know, so that it doesn't happen again. But more importantly, with regards to the charter, I ask you, and what's, what the perception is going to be? You, you seem to have, there seems to be these backdoor meetings and, and other get-togethers to, to look for resolve for this. I kind of question, does that look like backdoor politics? I don't know. I'm not a politician. I'm not, I'm not into legalese. I respect Mr. Troy. I respect all the board members. But it's I, I don't, I'm afraid, I don't want to see the town make, if there was a mistake made nine months ago, you can't just make it right by coming up with something that's that'll pacify. I, I hope what you're doing is right. I mean, I don't know. It just, it just seems like you're trying to circumnavigate the charter. This is no reflection on you, Chief Chastney. I'm looking at the charter. Again, I if, every time there comes to be a charter question up, we go behind closed doors and meet, and come up with alternatives to circumnavigate the charter without looking for the input from the Charter Commission or whoever else navigate, talks about it, or, for that matter, the town meeting. I, I, I don't know if, you know, what's the point having a charter there? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm very interested in knowing what behind closed-door meetings are happening. I assure you that Attorney Troy is utmost on top of what goes on with the charter. As Mary Jane mentioned earlier on, it was a technicality. And so we're looking at that. And we're trying to support our police force and support ensure that we're moving forward in the most responsible way.
Can I, can I just answer to, hold on one second, Mr. Easop? So, so as far as circumnavigating the charter, it's not a circumnavigation. It's an adjustment. Every town makes adjustments to their charters. That's why they have Charter Review. That's why there are changes through the state government. These things happen. This is not a huge change to the charter. We're not reinventing the charter. We're simply making an adjustment to make a correction for something that was overlooked, a technicality, whatever it may be. We are trying to make an adjustment to make it work until we get to the point where the changes are made to the charter and to remove us from civil service. Unfortunately, it's a change that goes through the goes through the state. It's, it's not something that we just write a letter and, there's a process to it. And the last thing I will say is that all of our meetings are posted. Whether we have two or three members on subcommittees or any other meetings, all of our meetings are posted. There's no backdoor. And that is a huge, huge issue that, in the last few years since I've been here, we have always made sure that we are being transparent. And I will make one direct point of that. And that was, we went to town meeting requesting the approval of the town to to adjust the enterprise fund for the sewer and some other things that were going on, and to try and get some funding. We didn't need to do that. We could do discussions with within the char, within the sewer commissioners, and we could have resolved it completely within. But we wanted the town to be aware, and we wanted the town to have the opportunity to know what we were doing. That's just one instance. And I just wanted to put that out there, because it, it made a difference. It made a difference to us, that the town knew what we were doing. We were very transparent. I, I think that's also something very important for you to understand, that we are very transparent. And it, it is a temporary navigation, if you will, to move to the right direction. Charter changes happen on a regular basis in every town. It's, it's not something where we're doing a backdoor political change. It is none of that in any way. And that's why we're here today, to be very transparent about it.
Can I explain?
Okay. First off, the, the backdoor meetings I'm talking about, they were legal. I'm, I'm not saying they're not. But there was a meeting, this has all come about very quickly. It first showed up in the newspaper just, what, a couple of days ago? The meetings I'm talking about was, rightfully so, the meeting you had last night. The development of the, the new contract and whatever the paperwork is to do. This meeting, was this meeting posted?
Yeah.
The thing is, where is it posted?
It's posted on the website, it's posted by the town clerk.
But shouldn't, shouldn't, shouldn't these meetings of this sort be posted in a way where you have some sort of advance notice?
We didn't have a lot of advance notice from last night.
And that, that's, that's the case in point.
We had the forty-eight hours.
That, that's, that's the case in point.
Not for emergency.
Not for this one.
Yeah.
Last night's was.
Yes.
Last night's was posted forty-eight hours. Forty-eight hours as it's supposed to be.
Right, but this one was, this one is posted, but it was posted last night till to now, because it's an emergency.
And this is what I'm, this is what I'm talking about. In your example that you gave a little while ago, you said you went before town meeting. I understand you can't go before town meeting for, for everything, but this is really you're doing this very, very quickly. It's not, you're not offering much input from the community. That's the only thing I'm bringing up, and that's where I'm, I'm, the perception that the perception that could be a result of this is that you're just trying to rush this through. That's, and Jim.
So I haven't been, I've only been on the board a couple of months. I haven't been through this whole thing. The, the board is not doing anything to change the charter by this action. The board is actually trying to follow the charter and what the charter says the board has to do, and the way that the board has to proceed, the way the town administrator proceeds, and the procedures that are in the charter for establishing a position. So I think what we're really trying to do is follow the charter, be procedurally correct. We met in an executive session last night to have discussion and negotiations with the Mr. Chastney about the position, and to discuss the legal issues that had been questioned. Normally, when you have an executive session, you're going into an open meeting, it's before a regularly scheduled meeting, and so you are going to return to open session and make, report out the results of that meeting. Last night was on this specific issue. We announced at the beginning of the executive session that we would not be returning to open session. The purpose of this emergency meeting is for the board actually to be in open session and make public the vote that we took in executive session, so that it could be a public vote, and the public could know what we were doing. The board is not involved in day-to-day operations, but the board has certain authorities and certain, there are certain requirements for establishing a new position that are in the charter, and that is the, the process and the procedure that we are following. So the purpose of this meeting is simply for the board to re-vote the vote that they took in executive session to address a procedural issue. And there's been some negative comments about why did this happen now, why didn't it happen nine months ago? I think what really may have triggered the question that came from someone in the public was that there was an extension of a contract. So there was an original nine-month contract. And when that contract was extension, extended, it brought up a question of whether or not it should be extended, what was the procedure for the extension? And so there was a legal question act. I don't think there's anyone that's been involved in this in any way that is trying to do anything negative for the community, against any town administrator, against the board, against the police department, against any person in the police department. We're just people who are trying to do the right thing for the town and do it procedurally correct, so that we are following our obligations as members of the Board of Selectmen and our responsibility to the town. So I, I, I think that we have to proceed with doing what we intended to do, which was to redo the motion that we made last night. We need to, we made a motion if we are ready.
Mary Jane, I just think it's important that people also understand that, although Mary Jane has only been on the board for a few months, she has served long-term as the Chairman of the Finance Committee. So this is not a, a, a new thing or a surprise for her. She's, she's very knowledgeable and understands a lot of the charter and the rules and regulations that dictate it.
Motion. I, well, hang on one second. Does anybody else wants to speak that has not spoken? George.
I haven't spoken, and I don't, I can't really add too much to what's already been outlined before. But just to let you know, the public, thanks to this, knew about what we were, you know, about this meeting about the same time we knew. We voted it, and it was
Online?
Online, within minutes. I mean, I, I realize not all people my age sit there looking at this at night, but there are plenty of people that do, and I think by this morning, it was, it was well-known. But it was within minutes, and we're talking less than five minutes, that we had the vote, that people were privy to it, if they had this particular technology that they had. And I, I said, it's the way it is. I'm sorry, this, the world's going too fast. I'm ready to get off the world.
I wouldn't say that.
All right, then I think we're better this long enough. I'm ready for a motion.
Mr.?
Yep.
I move to authorize the interim town administrator to work with Paul Chastney and Town Council Bob Troy to draft a position description and duties for the position of interim Director of Police Services for approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Last time around. Saying? Saying no, no others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Owe? Extentions? Denounced? For a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
For a second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. No? Extentions were done. Thank you.